Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the City Council meeting to order. First, I'd like to ask everyone to stand and join in the recital. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I think Matt, Matt might be late.
Matt's coming, but I think he's gonna be late.
Is Matt coming?
Yeah.
I thought he was working because I mean, he was out this week.
No, his daughter's in the county spelling bee. And it should've been, it should be over like right now, I think.
She must be winning.
Okay, um, Kevin, can you please do roll call?
Jay Barrow Short?
Here.
Matt Dyer's absent. Carter Foulkin?
Here.
Kelly Murray?
Here.
Abby Waller?
Here.
Okay, was everyone given a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting held on January 21st?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay, um, we do have, uh, our state attorney, Ann Razzo, is here. She's, uh, she's actually on the phone. She's, uh, at home, under the weather, so. Hey, I thank her for being on the phone at least. Okay, um, I guess first on the agenda, we have a request for a tax abatement from Hoosier Pattern. So, the representatives wanna come forward? Is this all we have here? Those two? Okay.
Good evening, um, we are here to request a tax abatement for both, um, manufacturing equipment and on real property. Uh, Hoosier Pattern has an exciting, some exciting growth, and I, I know it's laid out pretty well in a letter that, um, he submitted to the council, and he would probably be the best to explain to you what's happening and, you know, what he's looking for, so.
Yeah, we've, we've been doing this sand printing since 2013, and, uh, we're, we're over about 200 solid customers, uh, that needs, have a need for these, uh, sand printed, uh, to make castings. Um, we supply cores and sand molds to our customers. And we've been, um, uh, grooming a customer, uh, in the aerospace industry for the past two years. And that's, that's a long, uh, might seem like a long process, but in aerospace, I mean, I don't wanna go up in the air.
You wanna, you wanna get it right, right?
They gotta, they gotta go through a lot of due diligence and a lot of process. But about four or five months ago, we were called over, uh, to this customer, um, and we didn't have the capacity to take on this work. So, I made an investment of, uh, over 1.7 million, two new stamp printers, of which we do have in our facility now. Um, and that's gonna, it's gonna out surpass me. I mean, when you get a, we don't have a contract, uh, for this, uh, for these aerospace castings or these cores that we're gonna make for the castings, but, I mean, it's ours to lose. Um, these cores and molds that we're gonna produce are probably gonna surpass 20 years. So, it's, it's an investment for the community, it's an investment for my employees, um, that will, like I say, will outlive me. So, I didn't really wanna spend this kinda money at my age, but I thought it was a, a good investment, you know, for my employees beyond me.
Okay. Um, and what was the real property? Is it a building or property or what?
I think it's modification and.
Yeah, internal.
Okay.
There's nothing on the.
Okay.
Forty of it is, is these stamp printers and a couple of new CNC machines that I needed just to replace some other machines that it won't have.
Okay.
Like Keith, I know you said you don't have like a contract with this company. Um, do you have any concern, hesitation that they're just gonna pull out and you're gonna be stuck with this equipment or?
No, I mean, we've, like I said, we've been dealing with people for, um, this, this customer for over two years, and we've actually gotten a few other aerospace customers that are look, that have already done some work. Um, so I think we're in the, in the driver's seat, um, that we're gonna see this work. Like I said, it's ours to lose. Um, we're doing everything they want, they, they're very happy with us. They've had other, um, people have stamp printers contact them, and they're like, no, we're, we're very satisfied with what Hoosier Pattern's doing. So I think, I think it's ours, uh, and, and we've, I've asked them that, you know, um, so I've seen the aerospace, um, work that they do right now is for commercial, and the other 25% is, is for military. So, that was the biggest reason I made this investment, because it is for commercial, commercial airlines, I felt was a, was a, a good thing to invest in.
Where do you perceive the growth with this?
Part of it.
The growth? Do you see future growth? Are these two printers work, or you gonna build a new casting in the old casting lot or?
I mean, I.
It's hard to tell?
It's hard to tell. I mean, I, I mean, this'll, we have seven printers now, um, started, like I said, the first one in 2013. I do have two customer printers there, but, um, uh, who, who knows? I mean, I could see aerospace growing for us. And those other two other customers we have keep coming back. Um, it all comes down to quality, so, I see it growing in the near future, but, I mean, we've gone from one printer in 13, and what, 11 years later, we're seven printers now, so. It's, it's over, I'd say between 50 and 60% of my business. And it's helped, helped on the pattern shop side, which builds traditional tooling. It's opened up doors for us, so it was a good move to do it. A little scary, you know, spending that kind of money.
Right. How is the, I think the last improvement you made was some, like bulk storage or something that you could buy?
For the railroad?
Yeah, how'd that work out?
Worked out good.
Yeah.
Um, it's holding, uh, just getting stuff, you know, all inside and, and that was a good investment.
Okay. Okay, so, um, not having Ian here, um, is it?
Hello?
Go ahead, Ian.
Well, at this point, um, office side has prepared a declaratory resolution for council's consideration that would, um, preliminarily approve the economic revitalization area and be the first step in the granting of tax abatements for both the personal property and the real property, uh, related to the projects. Colton, I'm sorry, Colton Dickel with, um, Adams County Economic Development Corporation had also prepared a petition for an abatement that included a proposed abatement schedule for both the real property and the personal property. Um, those have been, I, I think distributed to council for, for review. Um, personal property is typically done on a five-year if granted. Real property can be extended up to 10 years historically if council approves abatements. The schedule typically starts in year one with a 100% abatement and then scales it back about 10% per year through year 10, if it's a 10-year, and then with personal property, it's a 20% increment over the five years. Um, this application deviates from what council has historically done in the granting of abatements, and that would be something that council can consider as well.
So, the, the ask here is 10 and 10, is that what?
Seven and five.
Oh, it is 10 and five? Okay.
The ask here is 10 and five.
Okay.
Um, the percentage, the percentages that are being requested, um, for the real property, it's a 10-year ask. It would be 100% in year one, only a 5% reduction in year two, so 95% abatement. Year three, 80%. Year four, 65. Year five, 50. Year six, 40. Year seven, 30. Year eight, 20. Year nine, 10. And year 10, or I'm sorry, year nine, 10%, and year 10, 5%.
Okay.
So it's structured that out briefly.
It's just the percentages that are different on the real?
Yeah, yeah. So, what she's saying is normally on a five-year, it's out there 20% each year, this one, and it's 10%. And on a 10-year, it's usually 10%. It's 5%.
Um, it, it actually varies from 5% to 15 to 10%. It's just a different scale than what council would typically, has typically done in the past for the real property. And then with the personal property, it's a strong deviation. It's still a five-year abatement, but in year, it would typically go 100% in year one, 80% year two, 60 in year three, 40 in year four, 20 in year five, and then full taxation into year six. Here, they're requesting 100% in year one, 90 in two, 80 in three, 70 in four, and 60 in five.
So why the differences? Um, any, I don't know, anybody's got?
I know Colton prepared us.
Okay.
He's gonna be here someday. We were discussing for the five, in the 10, we, he never discussed that with me or with Hoosier Pattern, so I'm not sure why he hasn't.
I'm not sure.
In that manner, um, something I can get clarification on that, I don't know.
Um, the personal property was significant more than the real even, I, right?
Right. Yeah.
I guess I don't understand the differences of percentages. Um, I don't know. I, I just think about 10-year abatements and, um, and how like there's, you already have six existing abatements with us. I would, I'd like to even see five and five or shorter, I don't know. Especially like with the real property not being as significant. I guess, I just don't know. Did Colton have any conversations with you about percentages or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. Do we always do 10 and 5?
I just, I think that's what the standard's been in the past.
It's within council's discretion to determine the abatement schedule and the degree of, of abatement.
So I'll, I'll be honest and even like transparent here as like newbie on council, like I'm still trying to grasp all of the abatement information. Um, and so I did a lot of reading today, um, on, all kinds of articles on abatements and everything, um, how we've done abatements in the past, um, and even, you know, I think moving forward, we need, and, and this was shared with us, that even like Burn has like this point system that is very objective of meeting certain requirements, um, when applying for tax abatements. That again, makes it just very concrete, very straightforward. Um, and so I'm just trying to understand and ask questions and, you know, as, and, um, you know, how many tax abatements do we continue to give existing businesses? I know that in a lot of cities, tax abatements are used to spur growth and bring in, um, you know, new business, new companies. Obviously, that's not the case with, um, Keith, that they've been a longstanding, you know, partner with our city. Um, so obviously, like I don't want to, um, you know, penalize you for that and, and, you know. So regardless of what happens with this abatement, like I really truly feel like moving forward, we do need some kind of concrete system for, for managing this.
Right, I agree. And that's, you know, that's why we, um, had our financial advisor run some numbers the last time, and it shows the payout and the return on investment, all the different things with, with the abatements.
Well, and I know like looking forward, we all know that there's so many different projects we want for the city, um, you know, as council, as, you know, even residents of the city, everybody wants something, and so we do need tax money. And so, to give abatements, like obviously that's some money that we're missing out on potentially, um, and, and with the numbers that were run, it's maybe not huge amounts, but obviously like every little bit matters. And so, again, I think that's something to consider.
And with existing legislation that's being considered at the State House, um, there, there's potential for real impacts to municipalities and towns, um, in the amount of revenue that they will have available. Um, and so that is, you know, potentially something that council should be taking into consideration as well.
Yeah, I can tell you that, um, every city and town across the state is scared to death right now with what's going on down in Indianapolis with tax reform. Um, they're telling us to plan on major cuts. So, um, it's up, I mean, it's up to you guys to discuss, uh, you know, what you wanna do, whether 10 and 5 or whatever you wanna do, or 5 and 5, or even the percentages, since the percentages were different this time. Um, I'm, I'm curious why.
I know, I'd like to hear from Colton of where these percentages came from.
And that's what, that is what's being requested. That is not necessarily what council will approve. Um, and it is, again, it is within your discretion. Um, and if there needs to be maybe a conversation with Colton, um, council also has the ability to table this matter, um, to be able to, to look into it a little bit further and back up, uh, for considering, the declaratory resolution could be considered at next meeting. And then if that is approved, um, and a schedule is, is determined at that point, um, and brought into the declaratory resolution, then a public hearing would be scheduled for council's first meeting in March, um, prior to entertaining a confirming resolution.
Is there a timeline, Ian, on when this has to be implemented?
There are, there are deadlines, um, once the petition has been filed with council, that council needs to take action on it. But taking two weeks, I'm sorry, taking two weeks and setting this for hearing, I do not believe would, would, uh, create an issue.
I would be in favor in, um, tabling it so that we could hear from Colton as to why there was a deviation in the. And then in, to what Jenny was saying, I do agree, I think we should have something, some type of concrete guideline or process that allows us to throw any abatement up against it to see if it, if it meets the eligibility of our, of our goals for the city. Um, and whether that's, you know, Colton works on that, and I would be happy to work with him on that as well.
I think I would be, uh, more comfortable doing, I was telling them earlier, I'm a process person, so here's the process, you follow the process.
Yeah.
So, if the percentages were the same, we follow the process, I feel comfortable doing that. If you look at Hoosier Pattern, if you drive down in the neighborhood, the neighborhood is only nice because of what they continue to do. So, you know, it's so much to consider, and the money he's gonna save, he's gonna give it back, so he doesn't keep it, so it's, it's a lot. It's a lot to consider, um.
Yep.
But how he treats the neighborhood, that, that speaks volumes.
I agree with that.
So are you saying you're in favor of the 10 and 5 at the normal percentage and not what?
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what I feel comfortable with.
I really don't know why Colton came up with that. Me either.
Yeah. I don't know where they came, I, I talked to Colton today, but he just let me know that he wasn't gonna be here tonight, but.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether personal property doesn't run down to zero in year, or in 20. You know, it doesn't go down, it only stops at 60. Right? You know what I'm saying? It normally goes 100, 80, 60, 40, 20.
Well, that's, that's, that's the bait, what, that's what's abated, so, I mean, for year five, he has 60% would be abated after, after year five, it would be paid full.
Right.
Right.
Cause it's only a five-year.
Right. Um, okay, you guys. Tyler, what's your thought? And Matt, Matt, I thought Matt was gonna be here.
I'm kinda more on the edge of Scott's theory here, I mean, it's a process, and it's on us, this, we had the same conversation when we were here last time, and we're gonna get it done, so.
And I, and I agree, the route these guys are taking, I do, we need to look into it, because I don't, I, I've never liked the fact that it's subjective, right? I don't like that.
Yeah.
We gotta pick and choose who gets it and who doesn't or however. I mean, it should be set in stone if it's an investment of this amount, this many jobs, this, at this pay rate, whatever, that, we need to have that set in stone. But if you guys wanna get by this one now, and we get it in place, so it's not one person sitting out here waiting on us.
Right, and you guys align with the regular percentages, so.
Yeah, I don't know how it came up with that.
Yeah, only Colton knows. So if we, so I would also be comfortable if we went forward with this one and, and, um, proceeded with our, what has been the process with the regular percentages, is what I'll call it. Um, but then going forward, I do think, I mean, I like a, I like, I like something more concrete and not so subjective.
Right. Is there a motion for you?
So.
Do we, so there's a?
Declaratory resolution.
Declaratory resolution, right?
So, is there, is there a consensus or a motion regarding the, um, the abatement schedule that would be a part of and incorporated into the declaratory resolution?
I think it was 10% and 20 for the five.
So, with real property, historically, council has done a 10-year abatement with, beginning with a 100% abatement in year one, and then reducing the abatement by 10% until year 10. With personal property, it's typically been a five-year abatement with a 100% abatement in year one and a 20% reduction through year five.
So is that spelled out in the declaratory resolution? It's not, right?
It's, it's not. It would be an attachment. The, the declaratory resolution that, um, that's been provided is, is good in its form and has, uh, space for indicating what a, what, how many years the abatements are for personal and real property. We'd simply add an exhibit, um, to that that shows what the abatement schedules are. And that, and that's necessary regardless.
So how's that motion sound? How do we, how are we wording that?
Well, it would be a, if you wanna go 10 and 5, then it would be the normal 10 and 5 with 10% reduction in the, in the real property over 10 years and 20% reduction in five years for the personal property.
But is that gonna be the normal for everybody going forward? Cause I don't want, I don't wanna put out there that I'm getting.
This, this is the normal, this is what'd be normal, how it's been done in the past.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
This is the way it's always been done.
What we're saying is we wanna keep it the way the last ones have been, not this one is better than what.
We don't wanna change on you.
Right.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And going forward, I think the, the plan is to develop a formula that says, you just plug the numbers in and it tells us which, where we should go and how we should do it, rather than picking and choosing by five people.
Right.
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 Okay. So.
So I'll make a motion to, what was your next part, step?
We need to introduce the declaratory resolution?
You need to introduce the declaratory resolution and for, with an abatement schedule for personal property of five years with a 20% reduction each year. And for the real property, there would be an abatement schedule of 10 years with a 10% reduction each year through year 10.
So moved. There's the motion. Um, and this is, um, this resolution by short title only, right?
2025 dash one.
Dash one. Okay. I have a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Uh, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Um, declaratory resolution number 2025 dash one, City Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, declaratory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Hoosier Pattern, Inc. and RH Warehouse, LLC.
I make an, right? Yeah, I make a motion to pass resolution 2025 dash one.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Okay. Um, that's all we need to do right now, right Ian?
Correct, and then we'll schedule a public hearing for, for next meeting, um, and then consider the confirming resolution.
On the, on the 18th.
Correct.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, um. How'd she do, Matt?
She didn't win.
No?
Still going.
Oh, still going?
Wow.
All right. Um, Jeremy, you wanna come up? Um, we're gonna discuss, we have some Second Street improvements to talk about around Adams. Um, the project down there kind of extends halfway down Adams, going east and west, and we have some quotes to finish the Third Street and First Street.
So going way back, back in the stellar community days, those discussion way back then, that there would be some additional work that could be needed, uh, could be done outside of the project. When you do a project like this, it's only, the construction limits are only so far. Um, state and federal government's not gonna redo your whole city just because you have a little project. Um, so, we're kinda looking at, at this area, we, in the Five Points area, we went as far as we could go up each street, you know, Adams Street, Second Street, Winchester and such. Talking with the contractor, um, all the contractors, all the subs involved, um, so we're just trying to get a feel for what you guys would like to see. A lot of the sidewalks are pretty bad, coming up too there. For an example, uh, I don't know if you know, if you remember where Matt lived there, right at, right at the alley there on Adams Street. To give you an idea, that's where that construction limit by the end, if you go across Second Street, it's just right around the corner, um, at Smith's. So, we had to make some changes with the sewer, the square sewer that goes through there, so we're gonna have to replace some existing sidewalks right now in front of Peter Hall. Um, we need to pull those out to be able to put the sewer in there, so we're, you know, we're at least on the hook for that amount. Does it make sense to make it all look complete from block to block? You know, from Second to Third, that, that final little couple hundred feet, I think it's a total of a little over 300 feet total. Um, obviously, it does come with a price, but my question is, you know, do we wanna make this, do we wanna be done while we leave here? Um, do you wanna make it match where you're pulling up to it, pulling up to that, to the block, and then, you know, it looks complete all the way through? and then, you know, it looks complete all the way through? That would be, the quotes that you're looking for would be lighting, irrigation for the plants, the plants will have to be irrigated for the first, at least for the first couple of years, or somebody's gonna have to be out there daily. They are drought resistant, but it's gonna take a lot of time, a lot, a lot of manpower, if we have to go out there, you know, through the fire department, or through fireworks, or however. It also involves total road removal, fixing any deficiencies that's under the road, whether it's, you know, soft or whatever. Basically, it's all reconstruction from first and third, on Adams will be the remainder.
Yes, I would like to see it finished. Where do we find the funds to do that? What do you have additionally?
The quotes there in front of you, the Fleming quote, the paving portion has been encumbered from last year, EB portion of that, so I get the Fleming portion, that would be additional, the fifty-eight thousand, and that would be their removal of all the, all the road and sidewalk. Second quote, the irrigation system that we talked about, and the third one is for the lighting. So that, the irrigation, like you said, is for all the actual roundabout area, and the lights would run, that would get enough lights to run all the way to first and all the way to third?
Yes. There are so many plants and stuff, and so many bushes and shrubs and stuff in this project, that I think we'd be so, we didn't really need to irrigate all this stuff.
Yeah, I agree with the irrigation, it's like Founders Park over there, it's made sense if you wanna keep that stuff alive. In the long run, I wonder what it's gonna cost in labor to send people down there for the first year or two every day, and then going forward, probably two or three times a week.
Yeah, not in, in reality, the fifty-eight thousand for the Fleming would be needed to finish the roads and the sidewalks, that would probably be the minimum, the minimum asked to make it all, so you're not stopping in the middle of the block. I might answer the irrigation, and then the lights would be on top of that.
The lights, you know, Kevin and I have talked about it, just our thoughts, I'm kind of on the fence on that. We have them, you know, in the main area down Second and First, but they don't run down any of the side streets, like Court, or Marshall, or Madison, or anything like that. Will they someday? Maybe, I don't know how many years from now that is. In my eyes, that's the one thing that we could, we wouldn't have to do, I mean, it'd be easier to put conduit and wire in now, but then you're also gonna have to stub things up and cause trip hazards probably, and it could probably be done behind the sidewalks later, cut out a section here and there. That's, I mean, up to you guys, but I think that would be the last thing I would, I would do out on those, out of those things.
Coming out of what, what's the ask from council that's not currently encumbered, or would need to be appropriated for this project?
So, depending on what was all included in it, the fifty-eight thousand from Fleming would be the removal of the existing. There's two options for irrigation, thirty-two thousand, five hundred, for the base irrigation, and another six thousand add-on for four-inch PVC sleeves, everything.
We don't need that.
Don't need that, okay. So just thirty-two, five hundred, and then the additional lighting would be ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars.
About a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand for the whole project?
What kind of lights are there now? Are there any?
They're very minimal, never been there at all. There's a couple wood poles, I think, in there, that the wood poles will have to be changed out, and or taken.
So it's two hundred thousand, but, um, looking at our budget, where is it proposed that that's coming from?
Uh, CED, likely. Now, there's money budget in there for Second Street improvements. So that, that, it'd be likely come from CED.
Okay.
There's...
I think lighting is crucial.
Well, it wouldn't be that there's no lighting, it's to go with the decorative black pole lighting that we have downtown. That's what that cost is for.
So when, he says it's minimal, like...
The tall poles.
Yeah, there's the tall poles going each way.
There's some there that will have to be taken down during the project, whether you put, whether you put new of those back up, or whether you put the decorative poles back up. And I'm not trying to throw a wrench in, and I just don't want this to look like an afterthought, and I just want to bring it up early enough that if it's, if it is a desire, that we address it, so...
Right, I'm all for extending the, the roadwork and sidewalk work to the next block. Again, question, how much we need to spend?
Are those lipos mounted on cylinders, or are they just mounted right on there?
No, there's actual six-foot foundations, six-foot foundation.
But they're flooded with the sidewalk, right?
Yeah. So they will be in the sidewalk, you have to run the conduit, and you have to have the bolts and everything sticking up, if you choose to do it later, or go back and somehow run it if you decide to, or all the...
Because right now, all the wire's overhead.
Yes, and then all the underground, it comes off the Clark station, the former Clark station, where the power will come from.
So between Second and First Street, there'd be a light on the sidewalk?
There would be six poles total for that, between first and second, second and third.
Will the sidewalks be wider?
Um, a little bit.
Because they're, they're not very big. I don't know what it would look like if you put a light pole in the middle of those narrow sidewalks.
Yeah, red, blue, we got to go back and all that.
Do we, do we have anywhere else that the decorative lights are on a normal-sized sidewalk?
Because we walk that about every day, and they go, oh.
Yeah.
I don't even know if it'd be eighty-one or ninety-nine.
See, see what the original, I think, there are at least six, or what you're putting back in, because you need a minimum of five to get around it, and that base, I think, is like eighteen inches, or a foot or eighteen inches.
Do you think the sidewalks ought to go back down wider than what it is now?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is, without looking at that, I have all the prints for a few months, but...
I think what Scott asking, I think that's important, because if they're not wider, I think putting that light pole right in, right in the sidewalk's gonna make that narrow. I think most of the place we have those decorative poles that are on the wider sidewalks downtown.
I don't know, if it's critical to decide tonight, can we make sure of that in now and next meeting, how wide that section is, and will accommodate the decorative lighting? This is a high pole.
How much is a high pole? What regular tall street light?
What pole, you're probably, new pole, new fixture, twenty-five hundred or inch. Now, we got to figure out. Well, it can be powered, it just has to be powered in a different direction, because you're limiting the feed that goes there now.
If it's not critical to decide this tonight, I would buy those last few items out.
This is the only thing that I was thinking, so that sidewalk there is really narrow now, I don't know how wide it's gonna be, and whenever you have somebody coming off the roundabout and not slowing down, it's even going to need to be wider, so if you put an obstruction there, now you have, because people fly to there now, it's a short distance, but it, they're gonna go fast, and you're close to the street. So that's why they got to...
My guess on that one, if I remember, that's probably only four and a half feet that's narrow now, and it would be a minimum five, if not six, because our code has meant that it's minimum five. But then you're gonna have curb out front, so that's gonna get you at least five, six, with the six-inch curb, and so you could possibly be up to sixty.
Are all these on the first street, are they all ten?
Eighty.
On the east side?
The sidewalks, those are eight, but the poles are behind the sidewalk, and there they are. I believe those were in the grass.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be, this is standard sidewalk, it's curving gutter, and then sidewalk, so that'd get you at least five, six. But to add just a little bit, you know, that's, was the deal breaker, and you guys wanted to do that, we could add the extension, so whatever, make it...
I'd like a rendering. I need to see what it'll look like. Perk me a picture.
We could get that for the next meeting, so you can look at it, see where the actual spots for lights would be, if they're tall poles, or if they're decorative poles, and...
That, that portion will not be drawn, all you, all you have is what's engineered, without paying structural point to redraw all that.
Okay, well, I thought you had, I thought you had a little bit of a drawing, had like where the lights would go, probably.
We, we do, but not in the section that we're talking about.
Would it be the same design?
Pretty well, yeah. They're following the same design.
Yeah.
But if you look in the actual detail of sidewalk, and this and that, towards all the different properties, you're not gonna have that without paying for additional engineering on structural point to design a sidewalk.
So really, really, it'd be up to us to decide where it goes, where the lights sit.
Whereas, stays now accordingly, to give additional...
This project has enough attention, at the end of the day, I would like it to look nice, and not an afterthought. If we get rid of lighting, I would like to replace the lighting with something, I wanna have less lighting. I don't know that, do we need so many, so much landscaping in the middle?
That's already done, landscaping isn't just in the middle, it's the...
All the way around.
The crosswalks and stuff like that, and that's, that's all for the project, what we're looking at now is outside the project, that's already done.
When do we need to decide to decide?
You could probably go a couple more weeks, it's been out there for a few months, so you could probably go a few more weeks. They're probably looking at April, May to start, and it's a short closure, so you're probably, like June, it'd be done, and it's more than six to eight weeks to get poles.
Yeah. I would say if you wanna take another couple weeks, that's fine.
Let's decide next week.
If it's past that, I...
Let's just do it next week.
We can figure it out, or the next meeting.
Next meeting?
We can figure it out. If it's past that, it's gonna be after, no, 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 no.
Can we walk it? Can you and I walk it? I can put a picture in my head if I walk it.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy. That's all I have, did you have anything else for council? Ken, anything?
No.
Department has, Jeremy?
It's our favorite pothole season, maybe not so favorite, we have been told potholes last few days, or at least yesterday, or the last week, but we have one driving, and that's one's now, projects going on, but we can get right out and take care of those. Obviously, tomorrow, tomorrow night's gonna be a little icy with the ice, and then riding back in Saturday, so we're prepared, we're gonna do some full pre-treatment tomorrow, a little salt tomorrow, ahead of the storm, at least to make it feasible for police fire and EMS to be around, in event, in event that there is an emergency. They're back and forth on the times, it could be from summer time till midnight o'clock before it gets started, but it's like, once it sets in, it's gonna be...
Yeah. Kevin G.
Friday will be a play out at the school with officers, some dock balls, and all the kids and staff. At eight-thirty is the first competition, and I think one-thirty is the second competition, so we'll have to work on that.
I'm looking forward to watching our police lose again to the kid.
We lose every year.
Jeff?
We have a new date set for fire-offs, in there, fire-offs one-on-one, will be June twenty-eighth, which will be the hands-on portion, which will be in Portland, their training grounds, and then that's a Saturday, and on Friday, the twenty-seventh, we will have a meeting to get you size for your gear, go over equipment, and Kevin and I have talked that anyone is interested about township, board members or anything, they would need to come on the twenty-seventh to get a little bit of education on how fire works, and the costs of everything that are still going on.
Okay, do you wanna make a comment on controlled burn?
So inside the city limits, there are no controlled burns, we had Sunday, there was a call that was given permission, the way I understand it, to have a controlled burn. Passed her by, drove by, didn't see anybody standing out there, we recalled it was actually put out, because it was not raw wood being burned, it was construction materials. The city ordinances do not allow for controlled burns inside the city limits, and to be honest, even in the county, IDM only allows you to burn raw wood. So anytime there's a controlled burn, it's, they should have a permit from IDM to do this, but that's very hard to leak.
Thanks. Anything else? Aaron?
Good.
Kerry? Josh?
Second Street shut down between Montana and Dayton for the next couple days, early days, so it'll be open on that, but...
Okay, all right. Anything from council?
Tomorrow's the deadline for flag design entry, so submit those to City Hall here by four o'clock, or email them to me.
Okay, anything from public? Anyone? Okay, is that enough from council?
Make a motion to pay the claims.
Second.
Motion is second, pay the claims, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same side.
Motion, Jerry.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Hold the same side.